Call the meeting to order. Consider approval of the minutes for the August 23, 2021 special and closed meeting. August 30, 2021 special and closed meeting. September 7, 2021 regular and closed meeting.
There you go, please.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Louder. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Having no adjustments, move to announced allegations John Scardina to discuss sidewalk ordinance in neighborhoods.
Do I need to keep this on while I'm talking?
You can pay that point.
Okay, thank you. All right, first of all, thank you for seeing me. Reason I'm here is talk about the sidewalk ordinance. And for people behind me who don't know, I wanted to read the intent of it. This is from the ordinance, says it is the intent of this section to protect and promote the public health, safety, and general welfare through the creation and preservation of a pedestrian network through the city that provides for the safe inconvenient movement of pedestrians separate from the movement of vehicular traffic through both residential and non-residential areas as well as public places. So what I'm doing here is I am building a house on Holbrook Court. Holbrook Court is in the Lofton Farms neighborhood, which is, I don't know, some people behind me can speak better, it's at least 30 years old neighborhood. There may be three or four open lots in it. I'm the last buildable lot on Holbrook Court, and there's not a single sidewalk in the neighborhood, nor do I think most people want sidewalks in the neighborhood. The neighborhood has one entrance in and out, and people come from other neighborhoods to walk in our neighborhood because of the quietness and the safety of it. So with this sidewalk, I personally do not want a sidewalk, and I don't think my neighbors do. It will start nowhere and go to nowhere. So my first question would be, you know, how does the sidewalk promote self-public safety if it doesn't start or stop somewhere with another sidewalk? A. And as far as that goes, as far as the aesthetics, would any of you want to be in a house where you have the only sidewalk in the neighborhood? Or would you want to have a neighbor with a sidewalk in their neighborhood or on their front yard? Because one things we want to, one thing we want to be sure of is to protect the house values and the aesthetics of the neighborhood. We want to draw more people in. So that's my biggest thing with the sidewalk. Now, there is a fee in lieu proposal to the amendment or to the ordinance. And basically what that says, and again, I'm sure you all know this, but I'm, we're talking to people behind me, I can pay a fee to not build a sidewalk. And we're not talking about a $500 fee, we're talking about a $3,000 fee to not do anything. And what that fee does, it goes to build sidewalks in other areas of the city. So then let me back up. I'm not here to complain about the city planning office, they've been very polite, helpful, professional, they're doing their jobs, I've got no issues with it. I'm not sure why I'm responsible for paying for a sidewalk somewhere else when my tax dollars should be paying for it, A. And B, the city is getting thousands of dollars more per year based on the fact that I'm building a house versus an empty lot. Plus hopefully I'll be improving the value of the neighborhood, which in turn will add more tax value. So it kind of feels like a slap in the face that I'm adding value to the city. And both aesthetics and monetarily, and your way of saying thank you is give us more money for something else that doesn't affect me. So, I mean, that's kind of quick in a nutshell, that's what it is. So my question is to any of you, would you be willing to, if you were in my shoes, would you be willing to spend an extra $3,000 for nothing?
Council originally adopted this many years ago and did require a sidewalk and did not have the fee in lieu of. We just recently adopted it, fee in lieu, maybe a couple of years ago, don't hold me exactly to the date, in for prime example of what you got right now. You would rather pay the fee than to put the sidewalk in. And we did that for intentionally so you didn't have to put sidewalk in and you could pay a reduced amount for the fee, but it in turn gave us more pedestrian safety somewhere else in town because we could build a sidewalk or lengthen a sidewalk in maybe an area that doesn't have it in other areas of the city. That fee has been accumulated, and when we get enough, we will actually do some in some area. And I think I heard Mr. Robinson say just recently, we had just about to do a couple small projects. And Mr. Robinson, if you've got anything to say, please come forward. But that's the reason it was adopted, to try to give more safety to our pedestrians.
Yeah, we've collected, we've been doing this, I think, since, August was the first one that we had, August of 2019, so a little bit over two years. We have 48 residential properties and non-commercial properties that have taken advantage of the fee in lieu system program. And we have enough for approximately a half mile in District 3 sidewalk, don't quote me on that, I haven't engineered anything yet, but about a half mile and possibly about a quarter mile in District 1. This district, we do not have much in so far, I think we've only had four residential homes built there that have done the fee in lieu. We have about $4,000 or $5,000 in there for that. We've got a couple others where we have enough for a block or two here or there to fill those in. But again, this is only two years in, so these will start accruing, we'll have more for more substantial lengths later on.
Council, questions, comments?
Well, I'll lead off, Your Honor. First and foremost, if I voted for the, for the fee in lieu, I made a mistake, I think, me personally. While I hear what Mr. Scardina is saying, and I actually agree with him, I think if we're going out and putting out new neighborhoods, if it's a whole new subdivision, it makes good sense to put in sidewalks. But to go in a neighborhood that's 40-plus years old, that has zero sidewalks anywhere, and expect him, to his point, he's spending a ton of money on the house, okay, so he's going to be paying in more tax dollars there. And for us to say, well, we just want you to pay $3,000 for a sidewalk to nowhere that's going to benefit somebody else on another part of the city, I'm not a, I'm not a, you know, political scholar, but that sounds like socialism to me, I don't know. I mean, just, you know, let's, let's, let's take it from this person so we can add somewhere over here. And what I've also seen is, I'm glad Mr. Robinson was up here because I know there's a lot of properties, there's a lot of residences around town that maybe they did pay the fee in lieu, I don't know. But I think you brought up a good point, because I can tell you right now, and again, this is, this is just my thoughts, if I were building a house in a neighborhood that had no other sidewalks, and it was the last buildable lot on the street, why in the world would I pay an additional $3,000 to have a sidewalk put out of my district somewhere else for somebody else's gain? He pays taxes. So, you know, again, I've done a lot of thinking, and you can, you can, we can pull the, we can pull the vote, maybe I voted in support of it and didn't even know what I was, shame on me. That's just, that's just my thoughts.
Further comments? It's, you know, when you think about it and you look at it, what Bill's saying has some, has some truth to it, is that this neighborhood was started by J.C. Holbrook many years ago. And obviously in the covenant, if they hadn't warranted, didn't require sidewalks. I understand the city's standpoint also of that, we do have neighborhoods that have probably more traffic than you're going to see on Holbrook Court. Does that make it right or wrong? I don't know. What disturbs me the most about it is it's going to take many years, many years, to put sidewalks in areas of Albemarle where, for whatever reason, they, they weren't done. It wasn't a forethought or an afterthought. You know, I'm on the, I'm on the, on the post with it. In my neighborhood, I'm the only one with curb and gutter. And, you know, I don't know how that happened, but it just, it is what it is. I don't know that we as a council at this point can make a judgment without talking to planning a little bit more and getting some feedback from them. And I would, I would welcome, you know, Kevin's comments. I don't know that we can, at this point, pull one when other people have paid it. I've had multiple calls since coming on council with regard to this one specific issue. And, you know, it's not one you can hit it out of the park with. I think we just need to take a look at it and take the city as a whole and look at where the, if there is a necessity, let's try to work if there. Or you get grandfathered in one way or the other. But I think that's something that, that we and planning, the planning in us need to discuss. But if it were me, I wouldn't want to pay. And so I just, that's just how I feel too. Further comments, questions?
Yeah, I got a question. Mr. Robinson, you shared with us that there'd been 40, I think 48 residential people that have paid this, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, but there's not that meeting in District 3, which is where Mr. Scardina's house is going, correct?
That's right, and it's just due to the level, we just haven't had a lot of infill happening there yet. We do have some more development that's going to be going in there, they will be required to do sidewalks. And I really honestly think it's a matter of, you know, does council value having this amenity? Is this something the council sees in the city? Because right now we're requiring it in new residential. And it's a matter of equity and fairness as well to, you know, to new, we don't require it on existing homes, we're not requiring to put sidewalks in out there, it's when you're building a new house, that's when they go in, it's a cost of development.
Sure.
And to be honest, you know, we, we got a little kickback on this from a lot of developers at first, but most of them have just kind of accepted it as something, it's a cost of development and something that you have to do in pretty much every other city around here. And we've got, like I said, we've got, you know, 48 infill homes that have taken advantage of this, rather than building them, they felt, they felt it was a better option for them. We've got, you know, I don't know how many, you know, hundred other houses that are being built right now that'll have them constructed by the, by the developer.
Well, I want to make a, I want to make clear that I'm not against having a sidewalk ordinance, okay? But I believe in every, in every ordinance that we as a city have, I think common sense should go in front of all of them.
I understand that.
And when you're putting in a brand-new neighborhood, I get it, I got it, I totally agree, sidewalks throughout the neighborhood. But again, to go into a 40-plus-year-old neighborhood that has zero sidewalks and expect somebody that's adding to the tax base of the city of Albemarle to just arbitrarily throw a $3,000 check out there for a sidewalk is, I don't agree with it.
Well, and, and to be fair, I mean, we have, we did include some exemptions in there, we tried to create some fairness in there, in the ordinance, there's nothing in there, and I don't know any way that my staff can objectively look at it and say, oh, well, this is a 40-year-old neighborhood, they don't need to do them, this neighborhood does. This is a very long lot, it's 400 feet long, it would probably be close to $7,500 to $8,000 to put them in. We did apply the one exemption we wrote into there where half the lot is basically undeveloped, you did not have to do that. The price is also reduced, down to 75% of what it would cost, so it's a substantial reduction from what would have been required to just be installed otherwise. So it's, you know, we, we've tried to, we've tried to kind of work with them a little bit on this.
I would like to say that John, I totally, I totally understand, and I applaud you for coming, bringing folks with you. It's to Bill's point, it seems kind of, you kind of pause and go, what? What have we got in place? So I know as a council, as Ben said, we've made some decisions. I'm, I'm of the thought that perhaps what we need to do is, I call it tweaking. Maybe we need to look at the ordinance and tweak it a little bit. I know Kevin and staff have worked on it a great deal, but there's always usually room maybe for some improvement. I don't want to throw the baby in the bath water out together, but maybe some tweaking needs to be done, because we do need sidewalks, and I'm sure, as you said, we're not saying we don't need sidewalks or don't want to get those, but we also need to find a balance to do it.
True. And if I could just say one thing, just to reiterate something I've said earlier, that the planning department has been very helpful. I mean, they're doing what they can within the ordinance, and so there's no complaints there.
That's nice to hear.
But I do agree with Bill that there has to be some common sense here, and where you draw the line, I don't know, that's why I'm here, because council has adopted the ordinance, so I think council should have the ability to tweak it, rework it, do whatever, because there are, I mean, Mura Field's a perfect example, it's a newer development that should have sidewalks, and it does have sidewalks for the most part. And if everyone at Lofton Farms voted to have sidewalks, and it costs, and I voted against it, it cost me $10,000 to do mine, I mean, that's democracy. If everyone in the neighborhood wants to put the whole neighborhood in, sure, I may not like it, but I'd gladly do it, because that's what neighbors do. So that, that's all I'm really asking for. You know, I mean, if you're going to sit here and say, you know, this is a great thing and you should do it, then I would ask each of you to match my $3,000, because they'll be great for the city. But, you know, the other part of this is, they will, the city will hold up my CO if I don't pay the fee in lieu or put a sidewalk in. So as discussions go on, instead of holding my CO as ransom, can we, can we postpone it until city council has made a decision? Like, if you guys make a decision November 10th and things go as planned, I'd already have paid it. So I mean, of course, I want to move forward a common sense application to the ordinance, but is there anything we can do for this case where, you know, I don't pay the $3,000 and next week the ordinance gets changed and all of a sudden, you know, it goes with my lumber prices? I mean, and I don't, that's a separate question, but I feel, I feel like I'm being held ransom for the fee in lieu, and I get why the city's doing it, because if they don't, they'll never get it. I'm sitting here telling you right now, you know, if you give me honest, open mind and consideration, and December 3rd or whatever your meeting is, you say no, it's going to stay, I'll pay it. But I, I think the ordinance needs to be looked at seriously about how it's worded. I feel like a lot of times when laws or ordinance go into play, it's a one-size-fits-all. And that's not the case for anything that I know of. So I guess my ask is, you know, can we do something with that?
Questions for Mr. Scardina?
Yes, thanks, John, for coming up here. And I have intentionally, I was glad that I didn't have any conversation with you beforehand, I knew what was going on, I mean, I knew the issue was out there. Thanks for coming, thanks for bringing your array of folks to support you back there. I understand completely, okay? How far, how close are you to the CO, that issue?
If I could pull off a miracle, we're moving in first of November.
Like this year, November?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. You know, listen.
It doesn't look like it, but I've got multiple crews working daily, and I would do everything in my power, we want to have Thanksgiving in our house.
Okay. That answers the first question. The second question I want to ask of Mr. Robinson, Kevin, if you'll just, of those 48 residents and non-commercial since August of 19, if I took that down correctly, August 19 is when we did in lieu of, right?
Yeah, that's when we received the first one, that's correct.
We've had the ordinance, the sidewalk ordinance for a while.
That's correct, yeah.
Of those 48 residents, how many of them are the same kind of situation as John in a neighborhood that it was the last, and I know that's being too specific.
There's, there's, there's a lot of them. Because we do not have sidewalks in the majority of our streets right now.
Right.
And there are six properties that are over 3,000 plus as well that have been part of this.
That's dollars.
That's right, yeah. Again, it's really related more to this, you know, the size of the lot and the frontage that you have there, so. But yeah, there's, there's, the majority of these are in areas that do not have any sidewalks around them.
Dicker's Plantation is another example of an older, not as old a neighborhood.
Right.
But they don't have it, but I think some of the builders that are coming out of Stanley County into Stanley County have, from what I understand, are either going to put them in or pay for it. But there have been some individual homeowners that have built and faced the same thing with a certificate of occupancy, and I would, if we can, we'd like to try to work to see what we can do.
You know, and I, I'd have to talk with the city attorney about that, but that, that puts us in kind of a bad spot, because we have a, a process to find moving forward with this, and I don't certainly want to keep you out of your home or anything like that, but, you know, if you guys want to look at doing an ordinance or something, you know, you'd have to have some quick turnaround with that, because we can't really operate on anything like that until we have an ordinance forward, so.
That's why I said earlier, it would, it would have to be a discussion between us and you guys versus an arbitrary, say, you know, I'm sorry, what you did, it's not good, we don't like it, to heck with it, we're not going to do that.
Right.
Do it the right way, take a look at it, you know, if we can bring it back through planning and zoning or whatever, and go through the process, and with what you said, keep that out in front.
Okay.
And it may not change at all.
That's right.
But I would prefer to see it come that way.
Okay. Sure.
Marshall Rogers, you're signed up to speak also.
I know most of you, and I know you to be reasonable people, and Mr. Aldridge used the word common sense, and I think that's kind of what we're talking about here. I'm here in support of my next-door neighbor, and a mature neighborhood like we have, it would obviously be an eyesore to have a sidewalk, and it sort of smells of extortion to make him pay not to have it. But again, if you can tweak that ordinance, I know it's, I know of people who, who delayed an expansion because of that sidewalk ordinance, and it may have been before you started this option of paying not to do it, but I think that thing needs to be tweaked. But thank you for your service.
Thank you, Marshall. Thank you, I think it's a consensus, we will have Kevin look at it and come back to us. Thank you.
Your Honor, before we go into administrative, if there are, are there any other unannounced?
There are not.
May we move item 14 in new business up?
To?
To, to now, before you go into administrative reports?
Counsel?
I'd place a motion on the table for that.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Aldridge. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Number 14, discussion of rules related to deer hunting in the city limits. I think we have several members from wildlife here. Who wants to be the spokesperson?
Honor, I would like to set it up if I might. I've, I asked that this be placed on the agenda, because I have been getting some phone calls in my neighborhood, not just in my neighborhood, but folks within the city calling and saying that there's just more deer out there than usual, and there have been, what can we do? They can't, they can't use a bow and arrow because they don't have the appropriate-sized lot. So I asked that it be placed on the agenda, and it just happens to be that when I reached out to Darby, Darby said, well, we'll have you, Darby is one of the Stanley County agents, I'll have you, Brandon Barbie, who is our Stanley County officer, Ken Knight, and Rupert Medford, who are the biologists for around here. And when I drove up and saw not one, not two, but three officers out there, I thought, I don't, I think we ought to get them in here and get them out. So, guys, the floor is yours, and you know what our ordinance currently says, and for folks, and we remember people will be watching this live as well as watching it later. So I just would like to hear from you all on what we can do based on what we currently have, et cetera, et cetera. So the floor is open, the mic is open. And I have a copy of the current ordinance, I'm sure you all do as well, but, right here if you want it. So thank you, you want it. Thank you. Thank you, Ken. I guess Ken's taking the lead here.
I think we are prepared to take questions if folks have questions. But I guess in a nutshell, deer, about the only practical way to control deer populations is by hunting, and the city council has taken the step to allow archery hunting within the city limits during the regular season and during the urban archery season that we have, which is tacked on to the end of the regular deer season. I really don't know any other means that could be used to control the deer population other than just house by house or lot by lot, small measures, things like fencing or repellents, those sorts of things, which can work sometimes under certain circumstances, but, you know, it's not going to reduce the population, that's just going to help in individual circumstances.
I think just so that, and you've got my copy of the ordinance now, but based on that, there is a, there are three stipulations if I understand or read that correctly. There's distance, acreage, and height, isn't that right?
Yes, the hunter would have to be, is it eight or 10 feet? 10 feet off the ground, which changes the trajectory of arrows or bolts, so that it becomes much safer.
Okay.
250.
250.
250 feet from a, I don't know what's the wording, occupied residence?
That's what dwelling, school, church, commercial building.
It's written in there, I think.
And then a minimum of two acres, which I believe could be multiple lots put together if a person didn't have two acres and a neighbor also was willing to add on, then that could be done.
Oh, do that one more time. Say that one more time.
Am I right?
Yeah, two contiguous, two acres could be contiguous property.
Yeah. More than one, I mean, it could be two, three, four.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so if, if neighbor one had only an acre, and neighbor two had an acre, and they said, we want to help do this, then they could go together and do that.
Yeah.
And see, I think that most folks watching, some folks here, may not, I mean, may not understand that or know that, so that's good information.
I've got a, I've got a question. The, the urban archery season, if I'm not mistaken, I think, and I was up here when we adopted that, is that not, that's an additional 30 days after the regular season, is that correct?
Well, we, go ahead.
That's approximately correct, I don't know if it's exactly 30 days, but it is an additional season. And I don't, I don't know exactly the steps that Albemarle has gone through. I think initially, that's all you guys adopted, but currently, your ordinance allows hunting during the regular season in its entirety as well. So it's, it's a fairly long period of time.
So we're, we're, I'm sure not the only municipality with this issue or this challenge. Do you guys know of any other municipalities that may be doing different things than what we're doing? Because like the mayor pro temp said, I was driving down Yadkin Street the other day, between medical pharmacy and atrium, there was about seven deer just standing out there eating at 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
Yeah, so I've worked with a number of different municipalities as they go through this process, and it's highly variable. So I would say the most restrictive is Matthews, North Carolina, and if they're still doing it, they go out to, they send a law, an officer out, he okays the lot, they have to put signage on it, they determine which tree the tree stand is in, and what directions that they can shoot. I would consider that very extreme. On the other end, you have no additional restrictions related to height, distance from dwellings, et cetera. So you could remove all restrictions, and I generally recommend that myself. Ken may not, and, and I'll be honest with you guys, what I tend to see is when you get a group of people together and they start this brainstorming, and it starts with a great motive, how can we make this safe and make people comfortable? But it turns into a brainstorming session that now you need 10 acres and you have to be so far from houses, and you basically be so far from houses, and you basically, you rule it out of having any sort of efficiency for actually reducing deer herd population.
Well, it, it definitely is a very, very serious opportunity and challenge that we have. I was, I live off, off the connector, and you ride through there from, you know, 5:30 in the evening, anytime of the day really, but especially from 5:30 or 6 o'clock at night through early morning hours, you're going to see deer. I mean, you're going to see them.
So urban deer populations, they are harder to hunt because we don't hunt them with firearms. And I think that that will always be, that'll always be the case. The tools that are available to help manage those deer populations, I would generally think of them as addressing certain areas where the nuisance issue is too high. I did bring something, and I'll, I'm going to give you your ordinance back, and I'm going to hand this to you. This is something that is called the Community Deer Management Assistance Program. It is a program that allows us to basically set the season and give additional tags. And this is not part of urban archery. It would be separate from it, and it's not something that you would want to apply to all of Albemarle. But if you have problem areas, and you could get entire communities, I don't, you guys have HOA areas? No.
Very few.
Very few.
Okay. You'd have to basically get entire communities on board to do this. But basically, we could write the season that fits the need for that community. And anyway, I'll, I'll put it in here now.
Mr. Ferris?
So just a bit of a recap. When we adopted this, I think Mr. Knight was part of that discussion, and I think it was this entire council that was, was here when that was adopted, with the exception of one. And you know, we did go through a fairly, these are all community standards. We talked about community standards with the sidewalk. These are all community standards as it relates to deer hunting. And so as I recall at that time, well, I do recall that, you know, council had asked me to do the research and draft something that allowed it, but would make people safe. Because I remember there was a lot of discussion on council, you know, there's the controlling of deer population, and there were several people that felt that potentially the hunting inside of the city limit, they were more concerned about that than the deer population. And we did have quite a bit of public input at that time. So just want everyone to know that what we've got in place, while it might not, there's probably a lot of people that don't like that we have it at all, some people that feel it's too restrictive, but that was through a pretty collaborative and public facing process with a lot of public input. Now, it's been several years, I just wanted to walk through that again, because we did look at other ordinances, what, what regulations and rules that were in place in other jurisdictions to see what could be there. I think we had some additional that we probably didn't go with. I think there was a mention of some things in Matthews, and we thought, well, there's no way in the world that we're going to be able to, to manage that. We don't have a, you know, a hunting or wildlife staff ourselves. So there were some things that were chosen deliberately, but also things that were deliberately left off. And that's just a recap of what we had in place to try to make it palatable so that it could be in place and protect the public safety as well.
Mr. Whitman? Didn't we initially do five acres and come back and reduce it?
Yeah, we did. We, yeah, we did.
Five acres to begin with for a short period of time.
That's correct. And then we added, we extended, we added the additional season.
Additional season and we reduced the size down to two.
That's correct.
I wanted to ask, Ken, do any of y'all have stats on how many?
This past season, 2021, there were 12 deer killed in city limits of Albemarle in the urban archery season. We don't have a way to parse out what was killed during the regular hunting season. Last year, 10 deer. And I think last year was about 50/50 as far as the, the ratio. We always like to see more does shot than bucks if we're going to control the population. This year, I think it was more skewed toward does, which is good.
How do you get the data during urban archery season and not regular?
Say what?
How do you get the data from urban archery season but not the regular deer season? How's that reported?
Oh, because during urban archery season, because it's completely separate from the rest of the deer season, when you register a deer, they ask you which participating municipality you're, were hunting in, because there are just, I don't know, 30, 40, something like that statewide that participate. So that's how we do it.
If you went in your own backyard and shot them, you'd have to have that. So there's really no way you could take collaborative feedback with regard to what you kill during the regular season, because it's more out, because you can't take, you can't shoot a gun in the city limits.
Right, right.
I know it has happened, but also Mother Nature's going to have a way of taking care of some of this at some point in time. I mean, you don't, you're just not going to continually have a, a robust population like we seem to have now.
Mother Nature doesn't do a real good job of controlling the deer population.
So the donkeys have taken the coyotes out of the, out of the equation of going after deer.
Coyotes do their part. Yeah.
They do.
Yeah.
Or drivers.
Or drivers, yeah.
I was going to say, I would, I would, I would, I would bet anybody in the house that there's been a, a lot more than 12 vehicles, or 12 deer struck and killed by vehicles in urban archery season, every day almost.
Counsel, further questions, comments?
So Rupert, the, the information that you just gave, I passed on to the city manager. If we decided we wanted to look at that, what would the step, I saw the steps, is that something, I did not read through them completely, is that something that you all would come back to us with or help us with, or is that, is it pretty much self-explanatory in there?
It's, it's fairly simple. You sign up for it. There's, there's an application. It's online. I, I can, I can send it to you. I can walk you through it. It's very simple. I will definitely approve it. But again, this would not be something that Albemarle applies for. In fact, I've only ever had two community DMAP, two, two, two different communities, if I can use that word, sign up. One's a golf course community in Moore County, and the other one was a retirement community in Charlotte, or just outside of Charlotte. So in other words, this doesn't force landowners to allow deer hunting, but they need to basically all be on the same page. You don't want 60% of the neighbors not wanting it while only 40% do, or something like that.
Probably, they're probably so spread out. And I mean, the folks that I have gotten phone calls from are spread out with, I mean, they're not just in forest hills, or not just, I mean, but they're
But if you wanted to, there's no reason we couldn't tailor it. So if you, if you had a certain geographic area, a certain part of Albemarle where you said these streets and these streets, that from this intersection to the east, all the way to city limits, we could do that. I mean, if folks were on board with it and we could write you, we could take the season all the way to the end of March if you wanted to, even have additional season. And we could give, say you only had a few hunters, you don't want to open it up to multiple hunters, we can give additional tags to the hunters that have been given permission for that area. So it's, it's an additional tool. I don't know if it's one you want to use or not, but, but maybe. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions?
That's a good idea.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. We appreciate the information. Number four, stormwater plan project update.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Here tonight, not going to do a lot of speaking. Sidewalks, deer going on into stormwater, so we're all over the place. As you all know, we've been actively working with the stormwater management plan here in the city, and a lot of activity have been going on behind the scenes. We're here tonight to do a presentation. Got Tom Murray with WK Dixon, who is the lead with this project. Inga Kennedy, you are familiar with. She's been doing some public outreach and public engagements here to speak. Keith Redling and Katie Cromwell from Raftalus. They're going to talk a little bit about rates. We don't expect council to make any decisions tonight, but if you have questions, tonight's night you can ask. So without further ado, Tom, ready?
Thank you and good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. It's good to be back. As you know, we've been, well, let me go ahead and As you know, over the last several months, we've been working on development of the stormwater program for the city. We've had a lot of meetings with city staff. We've enjoyed the time that we've been able to spend with you, talking a little bit more about stormwater, and we've been out in the community, talking to, to the residents and trying to get feedback on what this program could look like and the, and the city's stormwater needs. So we do have a lot to cover tonight, but I'm going to start things off by talking about what are some of the programmatic elements of what we could incorporate into the city's stormwater program. Inga Kennedy is going to review the public outreach efforts to date, some of the feedback that she's received, and some of our additional outreach activities that we'll have going on in the coming months. We'll talk about cost of service. So as you start to look at expanding your, or increasing your level of service with respect to stormwater, we'll talk about what that, what those costs could potentially look like. And then Katie is going to talk about the rate base and how we start to tie the cost of service with the rate base to some potential rate structures. So there are three general program categories that we like to talk about when we talk about a stormwater program. The first of which would be program management, and that would look at items such as new development regulations and how you manage stormwater for new development. It would talk about some of the regulatory responsibilities, whether it's local, state, or federal, and then start to talk about some of the long-term planning responsibilities and engineering for the stormwater program. The second element is operation and maintenance, and you can think of that as really the, just the day-to-day operations of your stormwater system. And so that can include maintenance of the infrastructure. It can include cleaning debris out of closed system pipes or open channels and streams. It can include street sweeping and other debris management that you, that you're currently working on as well. And then the third big piece we look at is the capital improvement plan. And you can think about that as those larger investments and some of the larger drainage issues that you've seen, you know, the historical flooding areas, the, the areas that are going to include a bigger fix than maybe just a, a maintenance project. So again, from the program management standpoint, there's several different elements that fall within program management. You have administration. The new development plan review, inspection, and enforcement can be important. We've been working with the city of Greenville, North Carolina for several years, and that's been one of the big issues that they've been concerned with is inspection of new development. So for instance, especially for that portion of the system that then gets dedicated over to the city right of way, they were having issues where they were having to come back five years later and making repairs to what should be new systems. And so they had to start really increasing their inspections for new development of subdivisions and other streets that would ultimately be handed over to the city. So that's just, that's just one example there. Strategic planning, looking at those watershed-wide studies and coming up with solutions to your critical flooding and stormwater issues. Water quality compliance, both for federal and state rules. Currently, you have a portion of your city that drains to water supply watershed. There are, and then again, I know we've talked a lot about some of the potential MS4 and MPDES regulations. We still don't know if the city will be brought into that program yet. We'll probably find out next year as the state goes through the census data and makes determinations for new communities to be brought into the program. Flood plane regulation, that's your FEMA flood planes and how we regulate within that area. Customer response, making sure that we're timely, we're addressing customer concerns, and we're going out and seeing how we can resolve those issues. And then the, the last item on this list would be asset management and inventory, thinking about your infrastructure as the asset it is, and understanding that some of the infrastructure is aging, and we need to start planning for the maintenance and replacement of that infrastructure before it fails. Because that's ultimately what we want to do with this element of the program is to move from reactive to proactive. So stormwater can tend to be a more of a reactive practice, because when it's sunny outside, you don't really think about stormwater. And then you have the big storm event, you start to see where some of your problems are, whether it's related to O and M, whether it's related to aging infrastructure, undersized infrastructure. And so you kind of get in this cycle of being reactive to storm events. So how can we start moving to be a little bit more proactive, understanding that some upfront investment can save on long-term capital expenditures. And, you know, I just made the example of construction inspection. You know, the last thing you want to do is take over a system and find out, you know, five years later, that the, the pipe wasn't installed correctly, you have joint separation, and now you have, you know, sinkholes in, in your streets. Flood plane regulation can help keep structures out of harm's way. And there's a lot of, you have the federal program, but there's other ways to regulate those flood planes as well. And then asset management to start to identify where your critical maintenance needs are, so that you can resolve an issue before it becomes a washed-out road closure. You know, if you can rehabilitate that pipe before it washes out, you're going to save a lot of money, and you're also not going to have that loss of use of that street. So our recommendations related to program management is to add an administrative position for customer response and billing purposes, to review your ordinance updates and design standards, and, and make sure that there, that you have a process and you have the design standards in place to make sure that that new development occurs in a way that you can take over that system long-term. Consider some additional construction inspections when the, that infrastructure is being installed. Start to set up your program to address the water quality compliance rules that may come, you know, it could be several years down the line, but you can start to set up the framework of your program to address some of those issues. And then continue with the watershed planning really, so that you can start to identify where those key capital needs are going to be. So on the operation and maintenance side, it's really, again, that, that the, taking care of your infrastructure itself, your asset or your system. So you have your open system of streams and ditches that convey water, certainly need to keep up with debris removal, sediment, anything else that can really impede flow. So what you want that system to do is to be able to convey the flow that it was designed for, and that takes regular maintenance. Focus predominantly within the street and, and utility right of way. The closed system as well, cleaning out catch basins, flushing pipes, and then minor repairs to those catch basins and pipes. And those would be the, the portion that your crews could, could safely do. So it might be replacing an 18-inch pipe, it might be replacing a catch basin, but being able to proactively complete those repairs in, in a timely fashion. Street sweeping is something you're already currently doing. And then you can consider, you know, some private drainage assistance programs. We see a lot of communities that have some cost share programs. That might be something that you consider in, in future years of the program, and maybe not on day one, maybe focused on the public right of way before we start to look at some of those drainage assistance programs. Again, we want to move from reactive to proactive. So what we want to do is reduce the damages that occur during storm events, have a more resilient system. And then the rehabilitation and maintenance of stormwater, of the stormwater system is going to cost less long-term than replacement. And so that's what we want to do where, where we can. So the recommendations for O and M are, and, and we'll talk in a minute about staffing and what some of the needs are, recommendations we have with respect to that, but it's really increase in the frequency. So you have streets crews and right-of-way crews that are out doing a lot of good work, but they're not dedicated solely to stormwater. So it's not something that they can do on an everyday basis, because they have multiple job responsibilities and they're pulled in, in many different directions. So how can we start to increase the frequency of the, of the maintenance so that we can make sure that we don't have those obstructions and we're able to start making some of those proactive improvements to replace aging infrastructure? And then the third big piece is the capital planning. And again, those are those larger projects where you know, hey, we always have flooding in this location when we have a rainfall event of four inches of rain. And so that's, really takes a little bit larger view, where we have to look at a watershed scale, because we certainly, number one, we have to understand how the water is being conveyed, right? Where is the drainage system, which we don't know exactly where everything is located and the size. So, so we need to understand that. And we also need to understand that if we make an improvement in one section of the watershed, that we're not causing negative impacts downstream. And so that's where we need to really look at the system as a whole to understand how it all works together. Capital planning projects are typically those larger projects that would require design, permitting, and outsourced construction. So that's So that's really the differentiation, I would say, between a O and M project where your staff could complete it in-house versus a capital project where you have to save and you have to plan and you have to outsource that construction in a, in a public bid environment. And what we're trying to do there most, most frequently is to resolve those major flooding issues that have caused problems over time, and we want to make sure it's prioritized and on a quantitative process so that we have a prioritized rank of projects that, that makes sense to the, to the values that the, that the city has. So our recommendations for the capital planning is to allocate an annual amount to the capital fund so that you can start saving to, to complete some of these projects. Develop that prioritized list of projects to make sure that we're hitting the highest priorities in the city. Identify and pursue funding opportunities. We are fortunate that right now there are a lot of funding opportunities available, so there is a lot to take advantage, to take advantage of and try to leverage those resources to the extent possible. Typically, when we start a stormwater program, we also recommend trying to implement what we'd call an early action capital project. So a project that you already know needs to be done, especially with this funding available that's out from a variety of sources, you could go ahead and advance that project a little bit earlier to show progress from the program. And then once your program matures a little bit and you have that capital list of projects, you have the program and the utility in effect for several years, then at that point you could consider revenue bonds if you wanted to advance capital, capital projects. But that's a few years down the line. I'm going to take a break and let Inga talk to you about what she's heard out in the community and some of the efforts that she's seen, and then we'll talk some more specifics about what some of the recommendations mean from a cost perspective.
Good evening. Good to see everyone again. Some of you I've seen more than others, and so, and I appreciate that. We have, we've been really busy with our outreach, and I'll share here what we've been doing all simultaneously as well as conducting some in-person events. We started with our website. We wanted to make sure that we set that up and, and it be a location for information as we go through the process that we can post regularly, and we will update that. We have our press release and we'll be drilling down to that as well. We have a fact sheet. We wanted to make sure that our early coordination was educational, as well as a survey. I'm going to give you some summary of what we've heard so far, and we're hearing good information from the public. We have project information distribution. You've seen me at some of the, the events around town, but I've also been in town introducing myself to different people and organizations so that I can follow up with them and distribute information relative to what we're doing. We put together a public engagement plan so everyone knows exactly what we're doing. Again, we've been to some events. The city facilitated a bill stuffer, and I did hear from some, some of the residents who participated in the events that I've participated in that they saw the bill stuffer. So when they saw me and, and my, my setup, they knew exactly what it was because they had received it in the mail. So I do want you to know that that works. And then also the social media. They, we've heard from several people that they received information directly from the city, from the city's platforms, so social media. That's very important. You're going to hear something about that here shortly. As I mentioned, we've, there's nothing, there's nothing like face-to-face contact with people, and that's been very, very important. When we participated in our first couple of, of events and the community saw the, the collateral, the information, and especially the survey, it told us a lot about what, how they look at flooding and stormwater issues. And because of that, we adjusted and tweaked our survey just a little bit. When I approached people, they anticipated or thought that the survey was only for, or this process is only for people who have flooding at their properties. And I quickly realized, we quickly, quickly realized that we needed to make sure that people understood that they could share information with us, not only about what's happening at their property, but what they see around the city. Because we're going to drill down and the survey is sharing with us some location-specific information that will ultimately end up in the GIS system so that WK Dixon and the city can map where those locations are. And there are some, some locations where people are identifying that we're hearing about and that you all already know about, but that are coming up consistently, and that's going to be very important. So our outreach was to bring awareness and provide information, and we're establishing some relationships. We've seen some people a couple of times, and they're beginning to recognize the process and that it's happening, and that's really what outreach is about. It's about relationships, and so that's important. And we appreciate all of the visits that you have made and while you were out at, at the events as well, and visits to the table to see what we were doing and, and see how we're talking to people, and to also recommend additional information. So we've had two food truck events, two farmers markets events, and then council member Towns and saw me at the, one of the last events and told me, hey, there was a biker's event over at the church, and we were able to make that as well. So that's been very good for us. But I want to talk a little bit and quickly about what we're hearing so far. And we are hearing things, and, and, you know, as, as I mentioned, we're getting information from a variety of sources. It's been very educational for us, for our team and for the city. People are interested in talking about it. When we start the dialogue, they talk about what they may have experienced, what their relatives may experience, want to know more about what they can do to impact the, the system. And I, I also want to say about the survey itself that a lot, we have our online survey, and we have a lot of online surveys, but guess what? We've received the most surveys from hard copy from our events. People are willing to take the time to complete the survey. If they have questions, we can answer the questions. But we also provide an opportunity for them to be mailed in. We've received a few by mail, and the responses have been very, very important to us. So let's go through this quickly in terms of the survey in terms of where we are. I was, I was surprised a little bit, maybe, that there was more than 50% of those who have responded who said that they have experienced flooding on their property. That tells us, that tells us a lot. And so we'll, and we know where those properties are, but that's, that's a lot. And most of the flooding occurs in their yards, but some will arrive at their buildings on the property, and, and even some, we've talked with people who have flooding inside their, their homes. Then we wanted to know where it comes from because a lot of people point out about, about the streams and creeks around them. The majority of the people said that they come from streams, nearby streams, and from street runoff and adjacent properties. And then others talk about how the, how the water runs downhill from other developments, and so that other was, is, is important as well, that other response is important as well, but the majority from nearby streams. And then the, equally, the, the off, how often flooding occurs, less than once a year, but then there were a number of people who said that it occurs more than three times a year. That's a lot. And we've got to find out where that is and, and what's happening. And then they have indicated 70% that flooding has caused damage to their property, and that's a lot as well. But, but look at this. Have you ever contacted the city about flooding? I was surprised to see that flip-flop, that, that, that close to 80% have had damage on their properties, but they've not contacted the city about it. Now, we've had some conversations with people about, and, and you've had conversations about the, whether the city is responsible, whether it's a, a situation that the city is responsible for. And a couple of people have told us that they thought that it wasn't the city's necessarily the responsibility of the city, but then a lot of them said that they didn't know. And, but this was interesting that they would not have contacted the city after flooding at their property. Not surprising here that a lot of people are not familiar with the stormwater utility. That tells us a lot because that's our education focus of, of some of our next phases. And this was an important question. What is the best way to inform you about stormwater flooding issues? Look how social media is taking over everything right now. And we have talked to a lot of people who have, who have indicated that social media is, is something that they're interested in. They've seen it from the city's platforms, but this is very informative to us as well and should be for the city, and we'll share obviously the final information in terms of how people get their information. The, the bill stuffer was popular as well as TV, and then the other was just being out in, in the community. That's what the other means. People are receiving information from their places of worship, from their libraries, from different places, and that's why we're out as well. But this is an important question. So what do we have coming up? We are going to continue conducting the survey. We want to make sure that we maximize that opportunity as much as we can. We have some other events that we're participating in. We're coordinating now with some of the places of worship to come to their places on Sunday or whenever they might have us. And then we also have a school system coordination that we want to continue to use all of our avenues to get information out. And then we'll have some more traditional in, public meetings in the, in the future. So that's where we are with public outreach, and yes.
Just a question?
Sure.
So hard number on those five places you've been so far, five activities?
Yes.
Hard number of, of surveys? What's the hard number?
So the, so the largest number of surveys we were able to obtain was at the first food truck event at?
City Lake.
City Lake, yes. That was, when we're, when, when, when there was an event where people are sitting around and they're relaxed and they're going to be there for a while, that gives us an opportunity to have dialogue with them. So that's been the highest.
So what's the hard number thus far?
The hard number is, the hard number is 105.
At 105? At those five events total?
Not all, not all events. We, we have, we have a significant amount, a significant number online.
Online, okay.
Yes, yes.
But that's totally.
That's total, yes. But what, but the, but the City Lake location is still the highest of all of the, of all of the opportunities because we had a couple of hours to move around and talk with people and explain and them give us information back. We also received some mailings from that event, so that was the highest. So you'll continue to see me around, and don't hesitate to reach out if there are events that are coming up that you, that you would like for us to participate in. We'll be participating in the notary via Ms. Whitley, and we appreciate that. So don't forget, don't hesitate to let us know what's coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Inga. And obviously, public outreach is a very important part of this process, especially when you're talking about a new program and getting people to understand how they can impact stormwater management. You know, that's the other side of things that we see is that stormwater, it flows through yards, you know, it's, it's on public property, it's on private, it goes back and forth, and so really getting out and educating the community is very important. When you talk about some of those, the MPDS Phase 2 rules that we could potentially have, two of the six major elements of the, of those rules are public participation and public education. So it's, it's not just a part of this process, it's part of the state's overall process to, to get out, talk to the public, and get them to understand how we manage stormwater and what we can do better as a, as a community. So the next segment of the presentation is to talk about the cost of service. And the first step that we always look at is what is the city currently doing from a stormwater management perspective? Because obviously, the city is currently performing, you know, stormwater functions, it's just not in a standalone program. And so we sat down and we met with city staff one day with streets, with utilities, and Ross and, and his team, and talked about, you know, what are you doing from a stormwater perspective right now? How much of your daily workload or weekly, monthly workload is, is related to stormwater? And we really tried to drill down to understand how much we're currently doing. And so we talked about, you know, tried to figure out exactly how that correlates into number of people. And our estimate on the street side was that currently you probably have about four FTEs or full-time equivalents working in stormwater. Now, that may not, that's not going to be year-round though, right? So you're going to have, you may have eight people working, you know, for a month at a time, whether it's before a storm comes, after a storm comes, and then you may have a period of time where you don't have a lot of individuals working on stormwater management. So that's, that's an estimate on the street side. On the utility side, I know recently the city's made a lot of efforts to try, as the utility crews are maintaining their easements, to also look at removing some of the debris within some of those major streams to try to avoid and prevent blockages. And so we're estimating one and a half FTEs from your utilities crews that would be allocated or dedicated to stormwater management. And then you have the administrative positions as well, and so we're estimating a certain percentage of the public works director, planner, public works assistance director that would be allocated to stormwater. So again, this is an estimate of the current level of service that you're currently providing, and so that adds up to, you know, a little over six FTEs. And then we're not currently looking at including leaf collection through the stormwater fee, and that's, that's being kept separate at this time. So from a cost perspective, you know, we got some information from the city, looked at, these are loaded labor rates with overhead included as well. You know, the estimate is that your current staffing that could be allocated to stormwater today is about a half million dollars per year. You see, as we go from FY '22 to '27, that's just a, a cost of living increase, standard increase throughout those years, so that's why you see, see the numbers go up. But for the streets crew, that's that four FTEs, the, the one and a half FTEs for the utilities crews, and the .65 for the public works, and you can see the totals. So that's current, and that's coming from the general fund, not funded through a utility or, or anything like that.
So question, is it okay, Mayor?
Sure.
So question, this is what we're currently doing? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
That, that is an estimate because everything's merged together right now in public works, correct? So you have, you have your streets crews performing a variety of functions. So some of those functions that they provide on a day-to-day basis are related to stormwater. Some of them are, they are cleaning out catch basins, they are doing some of the maintenance currently. And so this is an estimate of how much of your public works crews is allocated towards stormwater.
So back up a slide then, if you will.
Yep.
So if I look at this just blinded, existing storm, like we got right now, like we have right now, this is telling me that currently, and what we're doing now in '21, '22, based on who we've got right now, and I'm looking at Ross as he's shaking yes, basically the equivalents of four full-time year-round is, that's what these folks are doing. Is that what I'm hearing? Because I mean, this, because I did hear some, and you made the indication earlier that we could do in-house, and, and I immediately wrote down, well, if we can do it in-house, what happens to their regular job if we're taking care of some of this? Because that's what happens a lot of times. Well, we can do that in-house, and then what they're supposed to be doing. So help me out. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm reading more into it than I need to, but I don't completely understand.
Well, the, so the current staff is performing certain stormwater functions, right? They're providing operation and maintenance, they're making minor repairs. They're providing operation and maintenance, they're making minor repairs, they're doing some catch basin cleaning, some street sweeping, cleaning out ditches. But it may not be at the frequency that we need, where we want to be, to get to where we want to go.
Okay.
When we had the discussion with Tom, basically, we had to sit down and just estimate.
Okay.
So how many calls a week do you get for somebody cleaning out a ditch? Or, like you said, cleaning out a catch basin? We basically have a full-time employee right now that operates a sweeper truck.
Right.
We operate our vacuum truck sometimes. So when you take all that together, some weeks we may be focused on stormwater issues because it may rain for a week.
Right.
Well, when you have all hands on deck, we might have 10 guys working just on stormwater issues. So just the average is what we're estimating on this plan here.
That we're currently doing.
Yes.
Correct.
Now, and these are estimates, we're not taking any time, we're not actually calculating the time, so it could be three FTEs. It could be five FTEs. So that's an estimate to try to get, try to talk about order of magnitude of kind of where we are today. So we know that there's a number associated with the stormwater services that you're providing today. And so what we want to do is try to determine what that is within, it doesn't have to be exact, but we want to understand that the city is currently providing some stormwater service and there's a cost associated with that. It may be housed in public works, it may not be housed in a standalone stormwater program today, but there is some service being performed today. And that's what we're trying to convey with these couple of slides here. So then, we talk about the next step is, so we know we want to increase the level of service, we know that we have some stormwater issues and we want to be able to do more. So how can, what does it look like to start to perform more frequent maintenance and have a dedicated stormwater crew so that we can move from reactive to proactive? And so our estimate on the O and M side is to add an additional streets crew, which would be a total of four FTEs that would be solely dedicated to stormwater. That's where you can start to really see, number one, you're doing that proactive maintenance on a regular basis. And number two, you can start to make some of those smaller repairs that we talked about, some of those in-house repairs. As you're maintaining the system, you can start to see, okay, this 18-inch culvert is about to fall in. Or we have sinkholes at this location, this catch basin needs to be replaced. And you can start to complete some of those minor repairs as you're maintaining the system. We also estimated adding two FTEs within the utilities crew. And it may end up being a standalone stormwater crew that is able to utilize those public utilities easements so that they can maintain those streams and keep the debris out of the streams. So that's a big piece of what we want to try to do is be prepared for that big rainfall event. And while we may still have flooding, we want to make sure that the system is as cleared out as can be and can carry as much water during those major storm events. And that's part of what we're trying to do is if we can have some additional staff, we can make sure we're hitting these locations on a routine basis and allowing the other individuals to go do the other portions of their job within public works or within utilities that they need to be working on. And then from the administration side, we're looking at adding three FTEs, that would be a stormwater manager to manage this new program, working with those O and M crews, working with the development review, working on the capital project side. And then we would likely have two additional positions from an administrative standpoint, a customer response, and a stormwater technician that would provide a variety of duties related to GIS, assisting the manager and assisting some of those customer response calls. So you can start to see the level of staffing for those positions. So going back real quick, that's nine FTEs. Some of them, we started in 2023, understanding that it would be difficult to onboard a significant number of positions at once. So we are looking at possibly staggering when those costs would occur. But as you can see, once you get into '23, '24, being in that $700,000 range for additional staffing. So if you look back at our existing program, we're about half a million, we would be more than doubling staff for this new program for additional services to get to an additional $700,000.
Question for you.
Sure.
Of those seven, are we figuring that, you showed what we spent and do now to maintain towards stormwater activities? These seven, these nine employees, would they take those responsibilities thereby essentially gaining, let's say if we counted four FTEs and public work street division now, their time would be freed up to go back in function and focus 100% on street maintenance and core street responsibilities? Their time would be freed up, it'd be seven new employees, but a gain of four to the existing workforce in terms of FTV activities?
Actually, this would be on top of what you're currently providing. So we're assuming that we would still have access to those other staff, probably more in a storm event, either preparing or recovering for a storm. So you would have this streets crew that's full-time on stormwater. But as need occurs, you would be, we'd still be anticipating bringing in other streets crews to help in those situations. So this is really in addition to what the service that you're currently providing.
Okay. Thank you.
So some of the other elements outside of labor that the enhanced stormwater program would include is some material costs for that infrastructure replacement. Again, that's the non-capital maintenance, smaller infrastructure that your crews could perform in-house. So we want to allocate a certain amount of money for that. The contracted services would be continuation of the watershed plans, mapping out the system for the inventory side of things. And then ultimately, as you move into capital projects, the design and permitting costs. There's going to be a certain amount needed for supplies and materials, obviously, equipment as we're hiring new staff, and we're going to have to also purchase equipment to support them. Reserves and overhead allocation, which is your rainy day fund. So that's putting in a certain amount into the utility every year so that when you have that biggest storm and you have infrastructure failures, you have that money set aside so that you're not pulling out of the general fund every time an emergency occurs. And then the capital expenditures. So on what those costs could look like, and I should mention that these are, they're estimates at this point, it's to try to give you a feel for order of magnitude of what the program could look like. Any of these numbers could be tweaked one way or the other, but an estimate for the infrastructure replacement is $60,000 per year. The contracted services is a number that would start out high and then come down over time, once the mapping and planning is complete. Supplies and materials is just an estimate at $50,000 per year. And then the new equipment is based on costs that we've seen from communities for the equipment listed in the slide before. The reserves, again, $100,000 per year, that's an estimate just based off the size of the program. Every community will do that a little bit differently. And think of that again as your rainy day fund. So that can be toggled in either direction. And the other big piece that can be adjusted is capital improvement. So our suggestion, starting out to start to save for those bigger projects, is a half a million dollars per year. That could be increased or decreased. But we do know, in speaking with the public and speaking with you, that there are some significant flooding problems that we do want to address. I do think there is opportunity to leverage external funding right now, as we've talked about, whether it's ARPA or whether it's through the state allocation that they're getting from the federal government. So I think there will be opportunities on the capital side to leverage external funding. But that's, again, that's a number that can be adjusted one way or the other. But if we want to start attacking some of the bigger flooding issues, it's something that you are going to have to start saving up for. And so you can see, as, this is putting everything together in one big slide here. Again, the top piece, the existing, is what you're currently providing at close to a half a million. If you look in 2023, with the total revenue requirement around 2.5 million. So breaking it down into percentages, you would say the existing program is about 20% of that total revenue requirement. Again, that existing program is currently funded through the general fund. Approximately 20% would be allocated towards the capital improvement program for those larger projects. Another 20% would be allocated towards those new O and M crews, and that enhanced the O and M level of service. So again, this is kind of a big picture look of what the program could look like from a cost standpoint. And now I'm actually going to hand it over to Katie Cromwell, and she will talk about some of the details of the financial analysis.
So just to talk a little bit about the financial planning model, that's something that's part of the project that we've been developing. And kind of all the tables that you just saw were pulled out of the financial planning model. And so the model is flexible enough to contemplate a variety of different levels of service. So like Tom said, you can turn some of those cost categories on and off to kind of see what the implications would be in terms of rates. And so there's still a lot of work to do on the financial planning model and still figuring out some of the different assumptions and making sure that those are good assumptions. But as soon as we start talking about different levels of service, people want to know what that does to rates and how much it's going to cost. So we're going to start talking about that tonight. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the units of service and what are some of the projected rates. So the rate structure that we're looking at is based on impervious surface area, and we're going to be using equivalent residential units as the billing unit. So similar to how we bill for water in terms of thousands of gallons or some other larger increment, we're planning to bill for stormwater based on equivalent residential units or ERUs. And an equivalent residential unit is the amount of impervious surface area on a typical residential property in the city of Albemarle. And so to determine that, we measured the amount of impervious surface on a random sample of 400 properties in the city. And so for that sample, the median impervious area was 3,270 square feet. And so that is what we would be using for the billing unit for the stormwater fee. So that's what the equivalent residential unit is for the city of Albemarle. And so to give you a little bit of perspective, the city of Durham has an ERU of 200 or 2,400 square feet. City of Raleigh has 2,260 square feet. Unincorporated Durham County has 4,300 square feet. So that kind of puts you right in the middle between like some of those more dense cities and, you know, unincorporated area like Durham County. So you're kind of right where we would expect you to be. And so this was the distribution of the sample. So impervious area in terms of square feet is on the x-axis and number of parcels is on the y-axis. And so this type of curve is what we would expect. And, you know, we're using the median because it's less influenced than the average by those large outliers kind of on the long tail. So we don't want any of those large properties that got selected in the random sample to influence the ERU too much. And just to show you what that looks like, this is the smallest parcel in the sample at 929 square feet. So you can see parcel lines are in the bright yellow and the impervious surface area is in the translucent blue. And then this was the largest property. So you can see this property has a large driveway, it's a large house with a big garage and lots of parking as well. And then this property was right at the median. So this is what the typical residential property in Albemarle looks like in terms of impervious area. And so again, this is 3,270 square feet. So under the rate structure that we're imagining, we're imagining that all residential parcels would be billed for one ERU. So all residential properties would be billed the same. And the residential property class is pretty homogeneous, and this type of rate structure greatly simplifies data maintenance, which reduces overall utility costs. And so neighbors would all be paying the same amount for stormwater. And so that definitely helps easing communication as well. And then for non-residential properties, we measure the actual amount of impervious surface area on each property. And we've almost completed this process, we still have some final data cleanup to complete. And so at this point, we can estimate the total number of units of service, and that includes residential and non-residential, to be 17,376 ERUs. And you'll just note that about 66% of your parcels are residential. So most of your properties are on the residential side of things.
So when you
Yes.
May I?
Sure.
I guess it's the rate. I just heard you say that the rate would be the same.
Yep.
Single, flat rate.
For all residential properties.
Whether it was that 900-square-foot house?
Mm-hmm.
Or that 4,500?
Yep. They would pay the same. And so, like I said, typically, there are ways to increase equity in the rate structure. Like I said, the residential rate class is typically all very similar. You aren't going to have too many of those really small ones, and you aren't going to have too many of those really big ones. So it really helps simplify the process. You know, if you want to charge different rates for residential customers, you know, there are certainly different rate structure options. Residential tiering is the most common one. And then, you know, you would have to measure or estimate the number, the amount of impervious surface area on each residential property, which at this point, we haven't had to do with this simplified residential rate structure. And then that data would also have to be maintained in perpetuity as well so that each customer would be charged the accurate rate in the correct tier.
And just to follow up on that, and I'll let you go on.
Sure.
You made a comment about comparisons with Durham, unincorporated Durham City and some Raleigh. And if it's in here, I didn't see it, okay? What about comparisons of towns or cities that are more our size with demographics and that type of thing?
In terms of what their ERU is?
Right.
I don't have exact ERUs off the top of my head, but certainly, you're within the ballpark of what we would expect.
Okay.
We wouldn't expect anything, you know, too large or, you know, you don't have large areas of super, super dense development, you know, like you were talking about. You have people on acre lots, which usually, you know, leads to larger houses as well.
Okay.
All right. So that 17,376 ERUs is basically the denominator in the equation. So if we take the costs that Tom presented earlier and divide those by the units of service, we can develop some rates. And so you'll notice we've put a range on these rates to account for some final data cleanup on the units of service side, so we still need to work that out. There's also some assumptions on the modeling and cost side that are still being worked out. So we don't want to tell you any rates that aren't going to be within the the range. But you know, so that's why we're kind of bucketing it out so that when we are able to narrow in on those assumptions, we can be right within the range that we're telling you tonight. So for the first year, you'll see projected rates to be about $8.54 to about $9.43. And that's per ERU per month. So a residential property would pay between $8.54 and $9.43 for the first year.
Per month.
Per month. Yep. So in year two, you'll notice a pretty significant jump to be about between $12 and $13. And that's because we've added in that year, we've added contracted services, utilities, crew and personnel. So we've added some costs in that year that have caused the rate to increase. So I think in year one, the program costs were about 1.7 million and then they go up to about 2.5 million. So that kind of accounts for the jump in the rate. And then you'll also see that I'm showing you the five-year average rate. And so that's imagining that you may want to consider setting a rate that could sustain the program for a few years without needing annual rate adjustments. So you don't have to go back and change the rate or revisit the rate every year so that you can set it and leave it for a few years and know that your program will be appropriately funded. And so now I want to show you a few examples of non-residential properties and just so you can see what those look in terms of the number of ERUs. You can also see what the digitizing process looks like. So this is what it looks like when we measure the impervious area. This is a government building. So you can see lots of parking, a big building, and this is about 28 ERUs. This is a local business. It's a little hard to see, but you can see the street at the bottom. This is kind of on your main drag downtown. You know, those properties that are kind of right on the street and sidewalk front. So that's two ERUs. And then this is a large retail property, obviously lots of parking and a large access kind of driveway that's within the parcel boundaries. And that's about 220 ERUs. And then this is a medical complex and the total for all four of these parcels is 187 ERUs. So you know, there are some complexes that are all part of one development that may be divided into separate parcels. And so this total complex is 187 ERUs. And then the last example I have is for multifamily and multifamily complexes are treated as non-residential. You know, they're definitely different from your typical single family property. And so this one is 30 ERUs. And that's what that looks like. All right. I'm going to turn it back over to Tom.
Wrapping up here real quick, I appreciate y'all's patience. Just wanted to talk very quickly about what our next steps are. Number one is to continue the outreach efforts that Inga talked about. Number two will be to finalize those units of service. As Katie said, there's just a little bit more data to complete there. We want to continue discussions with city staff on how to implement the billing. We talked about, we actually had a very good meeting today regarding, you know, whether we would bill on the utility bill or the tax bill. So that is, we've had some good discussions there. We want to take feedback from today, whether you provide it today or whether you provide it into the future, but we want to hear from you and refine those program recommendations and rate structures. As Katie said, there's a lot of toggles in the financial model. We can certainly adjust a lot of those, you know, what happens if we add six FTEs instead of nine FTEs? What if we adjust the capital investment one direction or the other? So there's a lot of refinement that can occur there. And then we'll develop our draft report with program recommendations. We're currently in the process of preparing the standard operating procedures for the watershed plans. We've been working with the planning department on what kind of data we want to collect for the stormwater infrastructure and what that database looks like. So it's something that the city can have and maintain into the future. And then we're looking at beginning that pilot watershed study this fall. And that's where we, again, we go out and we start collecting information on the infrastructure. We understand how it ties together. What size is the pipe? What condition is it? Collect all of that information on the system itself and then start to develop some solutions to flooding problems in that watershed. And that's where you start to begin that capital planning process. So those are the, really the critical next steps that we're working on. But I know it was a long presentation, a lot of information, but certainly appreciate you having us here and we'd be happy to address any additional questions that you may have.
You say our rates are comparable to other communities that you're recommending. Are there communities that are very high? I noticed it seems to be that stormwater is a heated discussion in legislature about cost. And is there a reason for that? That some cities are way higher, the reason they're looking at trying to do things or what?
There's a big variation in what you fund out of your stormwater program. There's also a lot of variability in how communities choose to fund stormwater. So for instance, that capital planning piece, a lot of communities will not include that in their utility, but they will fund it out of their general fund. So that's something, you know, there's a lot of different options there. So the cat, you know, if you talk about a half a million dollars a year of capital planning, that's 20% of your revenue need, that's going to bump your rate up a little bit. There's some communities that their utility only funds their MS4 compliance. That's the water quality permit side of things. And if that's all your program is intended to do, then your rates may be a little bit lower. But when we start to try to tackle some flooding issues that have, you know, maybe gotten worse over time and you have aging infrastructure, you start to look at, you know, needing some additional investment. I know a lot of communities now are revisiting their rates. So we've seen communities start to look at, they'll hold them steady for five, six, eight years. And now they're looking at some increases to be able to fund some of these projects.
Council questions? Inga, this is a curiosity question.
Yes.
That is, as you've gone out and talked with people, the one thing I didn't hear was the question that I would think a lot of people would ask, how much is it going to cost me?
No, they have not asked that question. No, they have not. They have not asked that question. We talk about utilities, but we have some education to do around that. And so as we begin to, as you begin to consider things, we have some education to do around that to make sure that they're connecting the possibility.
That's interesting. Most times, that's the one thing you want to hear, is how much is it going to cost me out of my pocket every month or however?
We've encountered a few people who are former city employees or former elected officials and they understand. But even, but they understand even more the importance of having a utility and being able to pay for it because they really have seen things decline over time or be impacted over time. But no, it really hasn't come up much.
Then we're in good water right now. The stormwater yet.
Y'all going to be here the next two days? All this rain, we're going to go?
It will be interesting to see what occurs. So we'll be keeping a close eye out throughout the state, yes.
And the other call you get is that guy that calls in, I got water coming in my house. He doesn't realize it's hyperstatic pressure. That's creating the problem.
Yeah. And you saw how they responded to that question about whether they contact the city or not.
Yeah.
So a lot of them assumed that, yeah.
I was in the restoration business for 34 years and I only saw, I only had one instance in 34 years where the city was really responsible for a backup at a house. And it was the last big hurricane we had. Backup over 100 big fires. We were talking.
Yeah, but the conversations
That was an accidental incident that occurred.
The conversations, the people appreciate that the city is doing this. Let's say that. They appreciate that it's being given attention. And so they acknowledge that it needs attention.
Further questions, comments?
One of your opening comments was, we should know later about the designation of MS4. For some reason in my mind, I thought we were next on the line to know earlier than that. Have we always, has it always been later this year?
Well, I think, you know, the census data was a little bit delayed in coming out. So everything's based off the census data.
Okay.
So they take that data in. I don't know exactly where they are in the process, but the last discussions we had with the state is that they would be making their recommendations next year. And then it is a, it's a multi-year process. So it's not something that you would have to comply with on day one. And like we've spoken in the past, I mean, you're right on the line of it could go either way, you know, based off of your population and population density. If you don't get brought in, it's because of your population density is a little bit lower because your city limits is fairly large for the population that you have. But it's hard to predict exactly what they're going to do.
Further questions? Thank you very much. All of you, all of you.
Great presentation.
Appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number five, public housing door project final update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. On behalf of the Public Housing Department, it's my pleasure to be in front of you today to report that the door placement project is complete. The project started last year around March 2020. What made it challenging was all the work was done in mostly occupied units and of course during COVID. So there were delays in getting materials and all kinds of stuff here. But over throughout the project, over 2,220 interior doors, that's bedrooms, closets, bathroom doors were replaced, new hardware was put on them. And all the city-owned properties, 400 exterior doors were replaced, new locks were replaced. And plus there was some other work, some trim work, painting, some threshold work that had to be done. So the original contract was $1,361 and $217. The final adjusted contract was $1,309,807.99, a savings of about $51,000. There were two things that contributed to this. And the first one was that there were two change orders that resulted in reduction. And of course, we're talking about the allowances and the relocation of the allowances. I want to personally thank Stogner Architect, David Best, as the contract administrator, project manager, Kim Ko for their professionalism and actually sensitivity with working in these occupied units. And definitely Tony Poplin, maintenance supervisor, for being my eyes on the property, you know, pretty much throughout the whole project. And lastly, to city council for the approval and the support of the project. So with that, thank you very much for a successful project. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Council have any questions, comments? We appreciate it. And this is something we've been looking forward to finishing. But why I've got you up here?
Sure.
I think this is your last meeting?
Correct.
Well, I want you to know everything that you've done for the city. We appreciate very much and we really hate to see you leave and wish you would reconsider. But thank you very much. Council comments?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I truly want to say thank you to all of you all, the leadership team and the staff. I've really learned a lot down here. And hopefully I'm leaving Albemarle better than when I came here. But again, I've been truly impressed with the city government, residents, wonderful residents that you have in the city. And I will definitely be in touch to keep my eyes open for opportunities for the city of Albemarle with me being closer to HUD and working more closely with HUD also.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate all you've done.
Thank you.
Number six, recommendation to change the retirement contribution policy, Ms. Turner.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. What we're bringing to you tonight is a small policy change that we'd like to implement to just provide a seamless transition to people as they come onboard with the city. This is the anniversary of the revisions that we did to the employee handbook. And I spoke to my staff and they said one change that would really make a difference, but not have a huge impact would be to make the retirement contribution effective at the same time as all other city benefits. We are one of the few municipalities in the state that have this 90-day waiting period. It makes it very burdensome on our HR staff to have to put a code into the system, wait till that waiting period is over, and then go back in and actually start the contribution. It confuses employees because, you know, they start getting a check and then after 90 days, something changes. And so we get phone calls, why did this change? Well, I told you on the front end that there was a 90-day waiting period, but of course, everybody forgets. And then also, when people go to retire, they forget that there was a 90-day waiting period. And so they're like, well, I can retire effective this date, but oh, it's really 90 days later. So what we would like to do is just get rid of that 90-day waiting period and make it effective the start of the first month after your date of hire, as with all other city benefits. So I put the revised policy language in front of you this evening, and that's what we would like to do to our employee handbook with your approval.
I totally endorse what you want to do because that's Motion by Councilmember Aldridge. Second by Councilmember Louder. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Leslie Kinley would like to say thank you very much.
Number seven, departmental spotlight presentation is the fire department. Chief?
Have to put on my helpers for a moment. Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to be here to talk a little bit about the city of Albemarle's fire department. First and foremost, who are we? One of the things that I asked when I first came in is tell me about our mission, our vision and our department values. A lot of things were said, but there was nothing concrete. So I asked team members to get together, form an employee-driven vision, mission and value. So what you have in front of you is not of my will, but of those who are in the department. And this is what they felt strong about. So the vision statement for the city of Albemarle, the city of Albemarle Fire Department is dedicated to being a progressive, innovative fire department focusing on providing a safe community through effective emergency response and intentional community risk reduction. That was important because they saw a lot of different things. I too am happy that they came up with this particular statement because it drives where we are and where we're headed. A few, few numbers that we're looking at for this fiscal year, we were granted a little over $5 million. Not only that, we are an ISO Class III department, insurance services through the North Carolina Department of Insurance. We're an all hazards response unit. If you will notice, excuse me, if you will notice, we respond to a lot of different calls, but they're categorized. So to suppression, which is fire and response mitigation, and EMS, which is actually dealing with the medical calls that we have. 2019, 2020 and partial 21, you see the numbers of calls that we have. Our average response time, note that national response time under NFPA Note that national response time under NFPA 1710 gives us 5 minutes 20 seconds to respond first unit. We, and I'm proud to say that over the years, 2019, 2020, and 2021, we are under that response threshold. Training hours, training is significant to the response, the response and the culture in which we, which we have and which we want to drive to. So the training hours that we have and focusing on 2021, we have not yet eclipsed that number yet. We still have a lot of training to do, and with that, we're excited about that. Team members are excited about the training that they, that they are participating in and that to come. Community risk reduction. When we look at the overall numbers and what are we about? What's the focus of a fire department or any public safety agency? And it's actually dealing with community risk reduction and our efforts to reduce the number of calls we respond to. Unfortunately, I don't have accurate numbers for 2019. But for 2020, smoke alarm installs, carbon monoxide installs, safety inspections and safety programs. As you can tell, we've been pretty busy. And 2021, again, we have not finished the year. But with programs that we have in place, we will continue to drive those numbers. The city of Albemarle operates out of three distinct fire, fire locations. 1610 East Main Street is our primary location, 607 Concord Road, and 209, well, Northeast Connector. Those are two of our satellite units. They are strategically placed throughout the city in order to give good collective response times. Also, within the department, we have four fire pumpers. A pumper is classified as the regular fire truck you see with no ladder. So we have three frontline units and one reserve. We have one 75-foot aerial, which is the ladder truck, three command vehicles, three support vehicles, one soft bottom rescue boat, and one ATV with trailer. Our department is actually divided into three different divisions. We have, we have 43 sworn personnel, one civilian. We operate on a 24/7, 365 rotating shift. That's year-long. Emergencies happen all the time, but questions need to be answered as well. Administration, two personnel, suppression operates on three shifts, A, B, and C, with 39 personnel. And then the Office of Community Risk Reduction and Prevention, three personnel. This is a quick snapshot of what I just explained to you. We just broke it down into those particular levels, suppression and community risk reduction. Duties and responsibilities, administration. The biggest thing we have to put into place here is departmental risk management, overall, overall risk management, development of strategic plans and standards of coverage, fiscal risk management, as well as departmental policies and process. And again, the development of our chief officers. Community risk reduction, under the Community Education and Prevention, Prevention Bureau. We focus on the six Es of education when it comes down to delivering our goals and making sure that we push forward with community sustainability. And those six Es are, again, education, engineering, enforcement, economic incentives and disincentives, emergency response, and all of those equal community empowerment. Under that, that particular, this particular department, division is actually driven by the fire marshal. If you'll notice down, down on third, fourth, and fifth bullets, code, safety code compliance, emergency management, and investigations. All of these are looked upon in different realms, but they're all part of community, community risk reduction as it relates to community-wise business and residential. Current programs in place, school and daycare visits, neighborhood and community meetings, adopt a street litter pickup. Some of you may have seen the Facebook post where the firefighters were out picking up litter and ran across a, a community, a community pit. So they, they saw a snake while they were out and they were a little bit excited, but business as usual. Neighborhood safety walks, and this neighborhood safety walk, again, this is one of the important factors where fire personnel can get out, visit with neighbors, talk to them, understand the dynamics of the communities. And then at the same time, install smoke alarms, carbon monoxide alarms, and then identify other safety hazards that may be in place or in existence and other, other departments may have to be, reckon, notified, should I say. Fire station tours and along with the police department, a chaplaincy program. Future community, community risk reduction programs include senior safety classes, YouTube safety videos featuring our firefighters as they promote different levels of safety. Business owner code, code compliance, a meeting with current business owners and future business owners to talk a little bit about the importance of pre-plans and fire inspections, what we call safety inspections, juvenile fire setter intervention, and then fire extinguisher compliance training. We'll work in conjunction with human resources with that. Suppression, or what we consider our, our enabling response mode. Fire, EMS, special hazards. Operational risk management is the biggest topic here. We are an all-hazards response unit. We deal with any call that comes in that, that dispatch doesn't know where to, where to route it. And then with that particular group, 240 hours of, of training has to go into each firefighter. So you're looking at about 11,000 hours a year just on training. Each division, well, each, under this particular division, you have 39 personnel, which are suppression under Battalion A, Battalion B, Battalion C. Each station is led by a captain with engineer and firefighters. Some accomplishments, as I, as I mentioned earlier, we had an employee-driven mission, vision, and value statement drawn up. Succession planning. We're working on staffing and under council's grace this year, we'll add three firefighters to the overall, overall dynamics totaling 42 suppression personnel. Recruiting and retention, well, recruiting, we'll start with that. First of all, thank you all for attending our recruit graduation. But we were very successful, not only with the recruits that, that we had, but our, our recruiting efforts spun a little over 87 diverse applicants. So that was a win. Retaining, retaining our personnel, giving them a chance to excel. Different programs that, that we put into place, educational opportunities that we put into place. And then again, promoting next level opportunities, next level officers. Departmental infrastructure, upgrading our current facilities. That, that's going to span over a course of several years, fiscal year 2021 through 2026. Purchasing new, new equipment and upgrading current equipment. We're looking at purchasing a new fire apparatus, new pumper, and then refurbishing our current ladder. To date, starting January, January 1st of this past year, up until the last day of August, we've hit a little over 18,000 training hours. We've had 36 personnel certified in Swift Water. Under the professional development category, we've started a robust chief officer and company officer development program. There is, there was, should I say, a program that company officers and line officers were entered in, brave fire leader, which was a dynamic program. And as of today, I got noticed that 21 of, of the participants, which was all our participants, successfully completed that program. And so they'll have certificates to show that. Center for Public Safety Excellence. We, at some point in time, we're building a case model for accreditation. And then of course, looking at those, those, those dynamic lines, college, university certifications, building on those, on those levels. Next level goes. Reclassifying the department from a grade level three, ISO grade level three to a ISO grade level two. It's going to take a little work, but we can do it. Fire Department National Accreditation through the Centers of Public Safety Excellence. Fire Officer Accreditation, credentially, same organization, Center for Public Safety Excellence. Firefighter Advanced Certification, as well as continuing to enhance our community risk reduction efforts. As a department, we foster many different levels. But we look to be transparent in what we, in our actions, embrace the efforts of social justice and champion racial and gender equity. It's important that at that point, people know that we are here and we will support. And with that, we're one Albemarle. At this time, I open up any questions for council.
Council questions?
Chief, nice presentation. One question, what is the, what is the main focus point? How do we get from a ISO classification three to a classification two?
Excellent question. ISO looks at several factors. One, our water distribution system. Well, working with public utilities, Judy and Dan, we are actually developing a better, a better modeling system to identify hydrants, to mark those hydrants as far as their flow capabilities. Number two, increasing our apparatus or fire depart, uh, uh, fire truck staff line. So we are getting a new fire truck this, this fiscal year going into next fiscal year. But we're also refurbishing the one that we have. So that increases the opportunity for, for flow capacity. And the biggest difference will be the addition of three personnel. So we, we're, again, we've got a little work, but we can accomplish this goal.
And how do the, how do the residents of Albemarle benefit from going from a 302?
Excellent question again, sir. Insurance identification, lowering insurance rates, and lowering the insurance premiums, increasing opportunities for businesses outside the city of Albemarle walls to look at the city of Albemarle and say, hey, this is where we want to be. They, the fire department is moving in a great, in a great direction. Insurance rates are lower for the businesses to come in. And great place to live, work, and play, and it's protected.
Thank you, sir.
How many classes is it? How many ISO classes is it?
There are 10. The lower you go, the greater, the greater the effort within the department.
We just went to a class three a few years ago, correct?
Last year, we went to a class three.
And that's the first time that the city had received that status in a while, right?
That's the first time we've been a three at any point in my knowledge. That is correct.
Chief, congratulations on your first recruit class. And now the 21 firefighters, have they gotten these certificates yet, or will they be getting them?
They will be receiving them from the class facilitators. I was, I was really happy to see that, that all of our team members did, did pass. There was some time, there was time consuming and they, but I saw some smiles as well.
Just, just a thought, I'd love for the three firefighters that are going to be working for the Albemarle Fire Department to come in so that we can recognize their passion to go into the fire service and completing the first one, as well as the 21 who are getting certificates. I think we as a council need to reach out to our employees at the, at the ground level who are providing great services, not that we all don't. But these are the ones, I would really like to see them come in and let us give them the recognition that they deserve from the city.
Yes, council, we were very fortunate to hire four out of the, out of this, this recruit class that we just, we just finished up. And thankfully today and tomorrow, we are actually interviewing for two vacancies and moving forward with, with other group. But I'd be more than happy to have team members come in to be publicly.
I'd like to see that. And all, you know, everywhere, we just need to recognize our, our employees who are taking a step to come to work for the city of Albemarle and our appreciation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Echoing that, I love the idea that some of ours, of some of the nine, I'm not sure who of those nine in the recruit school, were some that were at the high school, in the program at the high school. I'm not sure if we got those or not, but I did inquire and they, I was told that some of those nine that were in the recruit school came from the high school, which is, I'm thrilled to death to have been a part of that.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim, there were three, if I'm not mistaken, that came from the high school program. So that, the high school program is where, is, is a great launching pad. But we have to start a lot sooner, a lot younger in order to indoctrinate service into our, our children to help them understand that this is a necessity, understanding where we are, not necessarily fire, but any type of service-driven organization.
Further questions?
Appreciate all the.
Thank you, chief, we appreciate it.
Thank you, council.
Number eight, it's information trespassing the litter on a private lot. Mr. Figur, she want to make a comment on that?
I don't know that there's anything more to report than what's the narrative in the agenda package. You know, once we investigated it, found that it was actually on the drive off of Bird Road. It's the drive going into the Lowe's Shopping Center. So called Lowe's Shopping Center, but it served over to Belk. And so it's that road. There was a wooded area behind there, private lot where there was a homeless camp set up. Police department has worked on that particular issue. There's also some debris there. If they're not able to gain voluntary compliance, they're working with planning to see what the next steps are. Since this was written, planning director Kevin Robinson has shared with me that he's had a conversation with the owner who's committed to removing the debris that is there. So there's some challenges to get that done, but that's probably a conversation that's happened since this was written. If there's anything beyond that that you have questions about, you know, Chief Poston is here, Kevin Robinson, planning director is here as well, might be able to answer your questions. But that's just the update of where that particular situation stands and what it actually is.
Comments, questions? Number nine, departmental monthly reports are in your agenda, does anyone have a question? Moving on to consent agenda, number 10, ordinance 2140 to consider ordinance changes for code enforcement, ordinance 2141 to receive public housing 2021 capital funds, and ordinance 2142 renaming Rebel Road to Unity Drive.
Legal proof for consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Aldrich to approve the consent agenda. Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to new business, number 13, McAllister Street abandoned request to be revisited. Ms. Hall, that was your request.
It sure was. Is anyone here on that request? I was contacted by somebody after we did this, I guess, at the, I can't remember if it was the August meeting or July meeting, asking if we had gotten a report yet back from NC DOT. And Les and Cindy was trying to help me, thank you Cindy so much for helping me go back and forth looking at different minutes within the meeting. And I couldn't, I did not remember if we had gotten a copy of the DOT. And I couldn't, I did not remember if we had gotten a copy of the DOT report. If we had gotten a copy of the DOT report before we actually made the, um, before we actually, um, entertained a vote. So that's what I was trying to figure out. Um, and I just, I would, that's what, that's the reason I brought it back up. And no one is here on the, on the request, so.
And you're correct. Yeah, DOT did say that they are looking at possibly putting a stoplight there. And we heard at the last meeting, we would hear probably from another subdivision between the, now and the end of the year, so then we'll know exactly where their roads going to come out. Thank you. Coming around, Mr. Ferris.
I don't have anything to add.
Mr. Townsend?
Uh, just two things. Um, first of all, I want to publicly thank the Neomile Project for, um, their project at the Waddell Center with the Community Garden. I think it's going to be a huge benefit to, um, and last but not least, and I'm sure the mayor or, Mayor Protem Howell will elaborate about Falcon Night this coming Friday. Now, I don't have all the details, but I know it's this coming Friday.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully one of y'all will elaborate a little more.
Ms. Hughes?
Um, I just would like to reiterate again, thank you, Lee, for your time and service to our city. Um, and also, the graduation service for the fire department, I didn't, that was their first one, and that was very, very moving to me, and I thought it was great to see those kids. I call them kids because they're young, but, but to hear them speak, I know that took a lot of guts and courage to get up there and share their stories, and, um, I'm proud of, of those kids, so to speak, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm glad that Benton has made the suggestion that we recognize them, because I think that's an important step. So thank you for coordinating that. That's all.
Chief Aldridge?
Uh, just, uh, just want to say thank you to Kevin Robinson and his department. Uh, we sit up here and vote on things and pass things, and then we expect you and your office and your, your team of folks to carry those things out. And, you know, one of the, I think one of the biggest compliments that, that your department or any department can receive is even when a citizen is at, at a, at a, at a pass, an impasse, for them to come up and say, hey, I don't like it, but the way that I was treated by this department or that department, uh, speaks volumes about leadership and, and having the right people in place. So thank you for, for all you do, and, and that's, uh, that's all I got.
Ms. Hall?
Um, Lee, seeing Lee made me realize that we got an email from Cindy some time back about some housing authority training, and, um, I know I have not done all that I should have done with that, and I hope that folks have taken that into consideration about deciding when they can do some of that training, because I, I think that we have seen and know the importance of knowing what our responsibility is on, as the board for the housing authority. So seeing you made me remember that. Um, I did get an email, some of you may have gotten it as well, that there is going to be another one of the litter cleanups on September 25th and October 2nd. Not having Mr. Bramlett here to remind us about all those things. Um, it is going to start at nine o'clock both of those days down at Rock Creek, again, September 25th and October 2nd. This weekend is, um, the Pfeiffer Alumni Homecoming Weekend, and there's a lot of things going on, um, down actually at the campus on, um, at the bottom of the hill, as I call it, on Friday afternoon and then Friday evening. And as I was downtown today, um, some storefronts are already putting out the gold and black to show their support of firefighters. Last thing is, and I don't know, this is not something we need to do, but with Mr. Robinson sitting there, Mr. Robinson in the past has always come before us to close streets for Halloween, and someone did reach out to me saying, because Halloween was on a Sunday this year, asking what we were going to be doing. So that's just something that's out there, and the, some people in the community are already talking about that. So I don't, we don't need to take the lead, but there's some talk about that right now about what folks are going to do. With that being said, each of you was sent an email, and I believe it came from Lisa, uh, a copy of the flyer. Didn't you send that to everybody, Lisa? A copy of the flyer. Um, is it at your desk too?
Yes.
Very good. Maybe I just put it in my stack. Um, that is the flyer for our Autumn Extravaganza, basically following the same outline that we did two years ago. Um, attaboy to all involved to get that off the ground, and I will say that we have actually even partnered with not only the History Center, but also things are going on at the Snug's House as well through the Historical Society. Thanks, Mark.
Mr. Williams?
Uh, just a couple of things. I apologize for missing some of the ribbon cuttings last week. I was out of town on some volunteer work. The only two things I had were the litter sweep.
Yes.
So if you were getting tired of seeing trash on the side of the road, come down to, we all pick it up. Come down to Rock Creek Park the next two Saturdays with, uh, Keep Stanley Beautiful, and go out and work for two or three hours and pick up a few bags. The other one is, if you missed Denero Main Saturday night, that's probably one of my favorite events that they do downtown. Um, and this was probably the best one. Weather was perfect, food is great, everything just went extremely well. Connie Ekman, with the organization of it, had it, just kind of like clockwork, uh, it's to benefit PDDC this year. So Jo Alman and a lot of her folks were down there, and it was really well put together. So it's going to be, uh, already on the calendar for next year, so keep that in mind. But that is really a great event, and I heard a lot of comments from people who were down there saying how great it looked downtown and how nice it was to see that. I just wanted to give those folks credit for putting on another great event this year.
Mr. Dry? Uh, just one thing, uh, there's a lot of stuff that's been said, actually two again. Uh, Lee, congratulations, we, as you move to, uh, another, uh, position, back to your hometown, I believe it is, and I didn't get a lot of opportunity to work with you, but, uh, I do know a lot of people over on that side of town, and they do speak very highly of what's been going on, and, uh, I hope we can continue that type of service to, to our people. Uh, lastly, I believe October the 1st is going to be our last, uh, concert at City Lake with the Tones. And if you haven't been out, and I know I haven't had a lot of opportunity, but, uh, if you like the good beach band, they'll, they, they certainly will be, uh, providing that great type of entertainment. Being the last, you get a chance to go and to the community, anybody that would be listening otherwise, uh, please come out and, uh, support this tour. Thank you, man. Ms. Louder?
Yeah. Mayor, I, I thought, when you could say it, a smart player, you did well. I thought I just, you were done staying with me. Then I got plenty tonight, but I know what your problem was. My whole thing. But you need to figure that. You've been sitting there about three hours, maybe. That's too long. That's it.
I'll entertain a motion that would go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A, 3, 5, and 6, to consult with the city attorney, real estate, and personnel. Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. In regular session. Motion by Councilmember Hughes. Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Coming out of closed session, we have nothing to report. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn until Monday, October 4th at 6:30. Motion by Councilmember Whitley. Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.